Okay, we'll call to order the Santa Barbara Planning Commission meeting, February 7, 2013. Ms. Rodriguez, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Pujol?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Bartlett?
Here.
Vice Chair Schwartz?
Here.
Chair Jordan?
Here, thank you. So first up for our action are a set of approvals. First one are draft minutes of January 17, 2013. So if we have any corrections or we entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Lodge.
There were a few typos that Ms. Rodriguez has corrected that I pointed out, and on the basis of the corrected minutes, I've moved that they be approved.
Second. Okay, other corrections?
Are we doing them separately, or?
Do them separately. Let's just run through them real quick separately.
Okay.
Okay. Any other corrections on the January 17? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Then we'll move on to the Resolution 001-13 for 1220 Shoreland Drive. Corrections or entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, and then finally, the draft minutes of January 24, 2013. Mr. Bartlett.
One correction on page two down near the bottom. Did it just correct the spelling of my name?
So noted. Anything else?
Again, there were some others that I called into. 引起注意， 引起了大家的注意， and they've been corrected. On the basis of those corrections, a move that the minutes be approved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Perfect. Mr. Cotto, any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
None of those things, but I do have an announcement.
Okay.
The announcement is that next week's planning commission will be canceled, and the items that were scheduled to be on those, on that agenda, will be heard on the following meeting, February 21.
We will look forward to that. And any public comment for items not on the agenda? No? Okay, we will open and close that period and move on to our action item, which is an application of Maria Martinez with the Cornell Andrew Laitis Firm for Roma Santa Living Trust for development at 101 State Street and 16 West Mason. This has a list of discretionary decisions to be made, three modifications for front setbacks, a modification for parking, approval of transfer of existing development rights, approval of a development plan, approval of a coastal development permit, and adoption of the draft mitigated negative declaration. Mr. Cotto? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to announce that I will be continuing to recuse myself on this item. I recused on the concept review previously just to avoid any actual or perceived conflict of interest, since I am the architect for the other three corners of this very same intersection. So I will let the commission do what they do best.
We will miss your expertise. Mr. Cotto?
Allison DeBusk will be giving the staff presentation.
Okay, Ms. DeBusk.
Thank you. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. As you mentioned, this is a request for a new hotel located at 101 State Street and 16 West Mason Street. Here we have an aerial photo of the project vicinity. And the project site is located near the waterfront, just south of the railroad tracks, and it is bounded by State Street to the east, West Mason Street to the south, and Kimberly Avenue to the west. The project site is comprised of two parcels and totals 19,000 square feet. The property is zoned HRC2. Here are some photos of the project site. These are taken from State Street. And you can see along State Street, in front of the project site is an existing shuttle stop. And to the south is the former Californian Hotel. These photos were taken before it was demolished. Here are some photos taken from West Mason Street. This is at the intersection of West Mason and Kimberly, and this is an existing commercial building that's on the project site. And this view is taken farther back at Mason and Chapala. This white building here is the existing building on the property. Here's another view from West Mason Street, directly across the street. And this view is taken from Kimberly Avenue. And again, here's that existing building on the property. The project involves the demolition of that existing commercial building, as well as demolition of the parking lot. It involves the merger of the two lots and construction of a new three-story hotel that contains 34 hotel rooms, a lobby, a laundry room, and 33 parking spaces in a garage. That parking garage would be accessed off of Kimberly Avenue. Here we have a site plan and rendering of the project site, and this is as viewed from the intersection of State and West Mason Street. And the project applicant will go into more detail on the project design. So the discretionary applications that this project requires are three front setback modifications, a parking modification to reduce the required parking from 34 spaces to 33 spaces, a development plan to allow the construction of 19,725 square feet of non-residential development, a transfer of existing development rights to transfer 10,224 square feet of non-residential floor area to the project site, and a coastal development permit to allow the proposed development in the appealable and non-appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. The review process for this project has included conceptual reviews by the Historic Landmarks Commission, as well as conceptual review by the Planning Commission. That was followed by the submittal of a formal application. And once that application was deemed complete, the project underwent environmental review. And the environmental review for this project involved the preparation of a mitigated negative declaration, which was circulated for public review from November 21 through December 21, 2012. One comment letter was received from the Air Pollution Control District. A final mitigated negative declaration has been prepared, and that final MND concludes that the project would have no significant environmental impacts. There would be potentially significant but mitigable impacts related to hazards and water quality. And this is due to the former location of a leaking underground storage tank that was located in the sidewalk along West Mason Street. That storage tank was removed in 1991, and the city is responsible for cleaning up the site, and we expect that the soil remediation will take place this spring. The issues that staff has identified as being the primary issues for this project are related to the requested setback modifications, potential impacts to views, and the development plan and transfer of existing development rights. With regard to setbacks, the required setback in this zone is 10 feet for a one-story building, or 20 feet for a building that is more than one story in height. Because this project is three stories and has frontage on three streets, it requires a 20-foot setback from State Street, from West Mason Street, and from Kimberly Avenue. And this table identifies the requested setbacks for each floor of the building along each of those street frontages. The table also includes information on the project setback from Kimberly Avenue after realignment. And that's because the city is proposing to realign Kimberly as part of the Mason Street Bridge Replacement Project. And that project is a part of the Lower Mission Creek Flood Control Project. Here's a site plan of the project, and this shows the required 20-foot setback compared to the project's proposed first floor. And you can see on this plan, it does show the proposed realignment of Kimberly Avenue as it was approved by the city council. Staff is able to support the three setback modifications as proposed due to the site's constraint of having three street frontages, and also because the proposed setbacks are consistent and compatible with the existing development plan in the area, and also because it allows for a little bit more flexibility in terms of stepping back the second and third floors to allow for some relief and interest at the ground level. With regard to views, the proposed development will change existing views, including mountain views from West Mason Street. And you can see in this photo simulation down at the bottom how the project will impact those views from West Mason Street. As concluded in the MND, the impacts to views resulting from the project are a less-than-significant environmental impact, because these views are not considered to be important public scenic views, and that's due primarily to the low public use of West Mason Street. The project would not impact views of the ocean, harbor, or mountains from State Street or Cabrillo Boulevard. Story poles were installed at the site to help provide a sense of the height and massing of the project. And here we've got photographs of those story poles from State Street, from Kimberly Avenue, and from West Mason Street. Based on the provisions of the city's existing development plan ordinance, up to 10,215 square feet of non-residential square footage would be available to the project site. The proposed development includes 20,439 square feet, which leaves the difference of 10,224 square feet. And the applicant is proposing to get that square footage through a transfer of existing development rights from property at 214 East Yanana Lee Street. Staff is able to support this development plan in TEDR because it's appropriate for the subject site and is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So in conclusion, staff finds that the project is appropriate for the neighborhood, is compatible with adjacent development, and is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan and local coastal plan. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the final mitigated negative declaration, approve the setback and parking modifications, approve the development plan and transfer of existing development rights, and approve the coastal development permit, making the findings that are outlined in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval included as Exhibit A of the staff report. That concludes my presentation, but I did want to let you know that John Lawson from the city's Public Works Department is available to answer questions that you may have about the Mason Street Bridge project and its impacts on Kimberly Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cornell? I think you're up.
Switch me over, Allison, please. Chair, members of commission, Brian Cornell. Allison has given us a good overview, so I will try not to be redundant, although some of my photos here are, so I will go through them quickly. There's our site, about .44 acres. It will become .41 acres. Gives you a good context of the relationship of the site to the existing harbor view, and that, obviously, this is intended to be an annex to that. The site photos, which likewise were taken prior to the demolition, or partial demolition, of the Californian. This is the old Sanborn map. It was originally actually a steam and laundry, and there were... It's interesting, this note here talks about tanks that are in the ground where they had full of lamp oil. And then, of course, the history of Loghead Brothers, it became Lockheed, used this site for the construction. In fact, I think they're actually constructing this plane in the street. You can see the building here in the background that still exists. And then across the street, of course, this is the Entrada Site, a little gas station on the corner. And in nicer days... And then, of course, it became, really, this became auto dealership down here on the lower State Street area. So that undoubtedly was the source of the tank problem that Allison mentioned. These buildings, of course, have all been demolished except for the little laundry building that's on the corner. So this is our site today. Of course, there was a small taking of the site back when the State Street improvements were done in the early '90s. And then this is the realignment that will be necessary for Kimberly Avenue. Here's our site plan. Allison already reviewed with you where that 20-foot setback locates. This is just another visual that shows you. And I thought you'd be interested on where the 50-foot setback from the top of bank is relative to the building. The second floor, we step back. The third floor, 48 feet. Allison put 43 feet on that little chart she showed you, and the reason for that discrepancy is the 43 is to this little element, which actually is a two-story volume, kind of a little lounge space that is off of the second floor. So that's kind of splitting hairs, but that's the difference. And then, of course, the roof plan, where all of our mechanical equipment will live within this well here, shielded from view. The landscape plan, we kind of reviewed this at the site visit. We've got jacaranda trees planted along the Mason Street. These are melaleucas along here. I think we've got cassias that are on the street, I believe. But it is, our intent here is to well-landscape the plan, and particularly landscape this area behind the bus stop in front of the first story. So here are the elevations for State Street. That two-story portion is 29 feet tall. We illustrate here the portion of that wall and commemorative plaque that is going to remain, and then, of course, how it will feel with the landscaping. From Mason Street, there was another little discrepancy. I'll just mention the five feet off of Mason. This second and third-story portion is setback. This is about 5 foot 11 inches from Mason, and then this face is back at 12 feet. So it has been important for us to get that variation in setback, as Allison mentioned. There's the 41 feet, and with the landscaping. Along Kimberly, we likewise have stepped it back. This is the trash enclosure, the stairwell, a two-story element that steps back to the three stories without landscape, and then with landscape, except it looks like one of my trees got vandalized there. And then from the north elevation along the park, the old Bebop Burger parking lot, we do have these melaleucas planted here. And of course, it's not showing, but there are canopy trees, of course, in that parking lot right now as well. And this view is a good one to show the relationship of the height to the Californian as it is proposed to be reconstructed. A section through the building going north-south kind of shows that relationship. 41 feet, this also shows that area where the mechanical equipment will sit, as opposed to the 45-foot height limit that's allowed in the zone. And then we put this in just for relationship. Of course, we know that the Law &amp; Trotta project is proposing some revisions, so this isn't necessarily current, but it does kind of give a sense of what that section is through State Street. And, you know, this reducing the mass along State Street, particularly for this property, was always something that I felt was important. And I think that's kind of illustrated in these views. Allison showed you this photo sim relative to the Mason Street view. This is up a little bit closer, so this really is the point at which the most of the mountain views are lost from this vantage point. Looking back towards the ocean from State Street, I think this shows how nicely the building fits in relative to the Californian and our neighbors. And then finally, that view looking in the other direction. And I think with that, I will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. That was short. So questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. I have a question for the staff. Allison, a minor point, but there's a couple of different numbers in the report for square footage. What's the real square footage? 20,000-something, 19,000-something?
The difference, commissioners, the difference in the numbers is due to the existing 714-square-foot laundry building. So for the development plan, that number is 19,000 and change, but the actual size of the building is 20,000.
Okay, yeah. I should have realized that, sorry.
Ms. Pujol?
I have a question for staff, and it relates to the parking portion of the traffic study. That parking portion determined that there were a requirement of 31 peak use spaces required for the site. I'd like to know if you could give me a short explanation of how that was derived. I couldn't tell from the look that I gave it whether that's due to some, say, discount rate you get for being close to all the alternative transportation sources in the area, or some other factors on hotel room size or whatnot. So I would appreciate that.
Commissioner Pujol and planning commissioners, the rate that was used in the parking study is from ITE Parking Generation Handbook, and that rate is based on an urban hotel. And so that does take into account proximity to transit facilities and that sort of thing. The other option is a suburban hotel, which this really doesn't fit under that definition. And just so you know, that the rates that are used, it is not clear whether those rates include hotel amenities, such as restaurants and gift shops and that sort of thing. There's a note in the ITE handbook that that data is not clear. So it's an estimate just based on hotels, and not positive if it includes those additional amenities.
And, Mr. Chair? I also have a question for the applicant. In the site design for the property, one of the concerns I have that I will address a little bit further later is the lack of any retail space on the first floor of the project, given that this is an area of high pedestrian and tourist use. And I don't know if you took a look at that or had considered the possibility of at least a small space for passerby's in that regard? Because there's very little that side of State Street has to offer in that area.
Commissioner Pujol? We, you know, it was something that Mark and I talked about early on because when the project just down the street that he built in 90...
2006.
2006 has a little coffee bar in it that I know he has complained to me about just because it was something that was discussed and ended up being put into the plan that has not, doesn't really carry itself. When we looked at this, you know, the first thing is that the bus stop is dominant here, really. And so retail, you know, around that bus stop was not necessarily lucrative. Obviously, parking was important. We were trying to meet our parking demand, and the nature of this project is such that it is, you know, the more rooms, from Mark's standpoint, certainly, it's important to make it economically viable. And then, any amount of retail we put on here, there really isn't. I mean, we already have the coffee shop just down the street, and there really wasn't enough room to put any amount of retail that was viable. So with all those things in mind, we really decided not to pursue that and felt that just having that landscaped area, as was discussed at the conceptual review meeting, was the thing that probably made the most sense along this section. Also knowing that there was going to be a lot of retail directly across the street, and there's probably limits to how much retail this little section of State Street can support. So all of those things combined is why we did not pursue it.
Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is for Mr. Cornell, so if you would stay up with us for a moment. As a follow-on to Commissioner Pujol's question about parking, in order to ensure that on-street overflow doesn't occur from perhaps an underestimate of the parking needed at the new site, I'm wondering if Mr. Roma Santa has considered offering special packages to your guests that would financially incent them to not bring a car on property? I know if you already do that perhaps at your other nearby locations, or if not for the first time, you know, might you, you know, consider adopting something like that?
Hello, commissioners. We currently advertise how close we are to the train station. We go as far as sending bellmen up to the train station to meet guests. We have, you know, on any given weekend, multiple guests coming from the train station. Specific dollar packages have not been put out there, but it's something I'm happy to talk to my director of sales about. But we do utilize the train station as an asset to selling our property. It's in, if you go in our website, it's clear that how close we are. And as I said, if you are taking the train and need help, we'll take you to and from there. Our bellcourts will go up the sidewalk and pick you up and bring you back. So we do support and try and utilize that. But putting it into a package is no problem. Happy to do it.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for now, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Campanella?
Thank you, Chair Jordan. Question for staff on the 20-foot setback requirement? A question on how that originated, or do we have a history on that particular, you know, why 20 feet? I didn't know whether, is it in the areas, is something relative to setbacks for oceanfront? Or because along the State Street corridor, the setbacks are much smaller than that. I don't know what the history is of 20 feet required.
Commissioner Campanella, in the HRC2 zone, as you note, it is a 10-foot or 20-foot setback, and that has been the setback, I believe, since the very beginning for that zone. I don't specifically know the intent, although we're going to look it up. However, the local coastal plan and the waterfront area design guidelines do talk about intensity of development and having open spaces and that sort of thing. So that may be a part of why those larger setbacks were proposed for this area of town.
Okay. And then the setback, I don't know if I'm correct technically, but the setback for a one-story building not greater than 15 feet in height is 10 feet, correct? And then the 20-foot setback is for buildings greater than 15 feet? So it could be a one-story building that's more than 15-foot high. It's the structure, you know, the height of the structure.
Yes, that is correct.
And that setback could be satisfied by a straight vertical setback without any type of offsets and things like that? So technically, somebody could build a solid wall up somewhat higher than 15 feet if they setback 20. Is that correct?
Commissioner Campanella, yes, that is correct.
On the calculation for the vacant, non-residential category and the 25% FAR allowed, the square footage that's coming out of the property for the realignment of the creek and realignment, sorry, the realignment of Kimberly, that's coming out of the parcel that currently the laundry is on, correct?
Commissioner Campanella, that is correct. It's based on the existing size of the parcel. However, the square footage for the vacant is based on the 101 State Street parcel, which is not being affected by the realignment.
So that's not affected? So the gross in net square footage in total really doesn't have an impact on the allowable square footage?
That is correct.
Because it's in the other parcel? Okay. Then on, as far as, if no development was proposed at this time on the property because of the realignment of Kimberly, something would have to take place with the laundry, I presume? That would have to be torn down or relocated as part of the realignment?
Commissioner Campanella, that is correct.
Okay. So one of the things that's going on is something would have to be done with the property on the alignment anyway when it went forward. And what we're looking at now is incorporating that something, whatever alternatives there are, within a development plan as proposed by the applicant.
Commissioner Campanella, that is correct.
And I guess the others, as far as the parking modification, the modification under municipal code is allowed, assuming, under the parking 8.1, assuming there's no increase in demand for parking elsewhere. And we are satisfied that that's the case. And we are satisfied that that's the case, because I think what we're talking about is one parking space under what's required.
Commissioner Campanella, that is correct. The parking demand analysis showed that the peak demand would be 31 spaces on basically a weekend day, and they are proposing 33. So it's two above the demand, which is one below the municipal code requirement. So we are confident that this will satisfy the demand.
Thank you.
Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question also for staff. Got the impression on the site visit that the design is not completely fixed for the bridge replacement, and is there any chance that that, it might vary from what is being counted on right now?
Commissioner Lodge, John Alson, project engineer with the City Public Works Department. The Kimberly Avenue design for the Mason Street Bridge project is consistent with being shown here on the 101 Street Project. So at this, there will not be any changes, significant changes, to the Kimberly Avenue design for Mason Street Bridge.
Okay. Perhaps it was the Mason Street Bridge itself that has not been completely finalized. Is that correct?
At this time, we are going to HLC, it's next week, to go and seek project design approval of the bridge geometry.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions also that are a little more tangential, and one of them just generally has to do with the, I guess it could be addressed in conditions, but it generally has to do with the negative declaration also. And that's, when you look around that particular area, there's a, there's a set of projects that have just been there forever. The Fest Parker Hotel project down on the other part of the waterfront has been there forever. I recollect that even, I always want to say Marge's project, and it's Alma Del Pueblo? Am I good? Okay, Alma Del Pueblo, for a long, long time, had a six-foot-high bare chain-like fence with three-foot weeds growing in the parking lot, and that one in particular was in front of another structure that probably the city spent hours and hours and hours agonizing over whether that project fit in well in front of another historic project, the Arlington. And so, at what point do projects that run into these delays actually cross into being a visual or aesthetic impact or potential impact? Or does, is the only choice available there, as you go through that process, just saying that that process you go through only recognizes a normal progression of a project? It's not going to recognize when a project falls into disarray and it actually becomes an impact? How does, how does that get handled or not handled?
Chair Jordan, that is actually something that is difficult for us to deal with because there aren't specific regulations or guidelines that address it. One way that we have tried to address it for projects that are coming through Planning Commission is that we've added a condition that the existing site and structure shall be maintained and secured. Any landscaping shall be watered and maintained. And I realize that may not address your full concern, but that's what we've started doing on projects to help with site maintenance and to make sure that the site doesn't become a visual blight in these interim periods.
I guess, I guess the ones I've offered as examples all became somewhat of a visual blight at some point in time, and it seems like they don't, they don't get solved until they're running up against a permit deadline, and then negotiations can be opened again and putting up a fence, taking care of the landscaping, that type of thing. So, did you have, do you have something you want to add, Mr. Cato? No? Okay, so that doesn't help me much. And then, my next two questions really just have to do with the, the conditions, and also down in that area too, when the Army Corps of Engineers, whoever it was, was doing the creek flood control project between, actually, the applicant's other two properties. There was a long period of time where, where construction debris was, debris, construction stuff was in the street on the weekends, say, work ahead, big six-foot things in the bike lane, and they were obviously used during the week, and then when they left for the weekend, they were left out there. And of course, during the weekend, during the summer, that's when that place is used. So I'm wondering, without getting down into the weeds, how you begin to kind of take care of these aesthetic or visual issues on a property, not necessarily making a statement on this particular applicant, but more on a boilerplate set of conditions, especially where, as the ones I've just listed, are prominent properties located in visual areas and also high-impact areas for our tourist crowd. So is there a way to help me with that, or is that just something to work on in the future?
Chair Jordan, I think there are some things that could possibly be done through conditions of approval that might help with that. An example would be the Entrada project across the street, where the city required a solid fence and that it be painted green and that landscaping be planted in front of it. However, those are fairly expensive improvements, and so we felt they were warranted in that case, given the length of time that had already passed and how much longer we expected it to be before that site was developed. But those types of things are things you could consider to assist in site maintenance, keeping the site looking nice until it's actually developed. Although currently, the site is used as a parking lot, and I would presume that it would continue to be used that way by the property owner until they're ready for development. But again, we never know what, what's going to happen in the future.
And then, same sort of question on, you hear me do this frequently, on construction days and hours, we put the boilerplate set in there, so an appropriate comment for me, maybe, maybe, maybe to make later would be Fridays before a three-day weekend on a Monday or a particular day after a holiday when we know that's a high-traffic area. I would imagine you like to err on the side of global rather than picking on a particular project where it's clearly located in a high-impact area, very visual to our tourist base, but is, is that, is that an appropriate comment to make, again, to work on those days of construction?
Mr. Jordan, I think those would be appropriate to consider in terms of the project's short-term impact on the surrounding neighborhood. For this particular project, the conditions, the construction hours were created so that they were the same as the Entrada construction hours, because we didn't want neighbors calling on one project and there being different start times for the different projects that are all happening in the same area. So we thought that would help the neighbors and help the city with enforcement. And also, to address your concern about storage of equipment in the right-of-way, this project does have a condition that will, that specifically prohibits that unless they obtain the proper permits from Public Works Department.
As I'm, as I'm sure most do, and then they become an enforcement issue, but it's just, it's not, that's just not a good dynamic to make those an enforcement issue. Okay, thank you. Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kornal, I have one more for you here. In order for the commission to support the findings, specifically Paragraph E parking modification, I want to make sure I understand a change from the conceptual hearing that we had last year and the ingress egress flow in the parking structure now. As I recall, we originally talked about an entrance on Mason, or an exit on Mason, I think it was an exit, right?
It was a one-way out.
One-way exit, okay, one-way exit. Now, so that's been removed, and it looks to me, I just want, this is where I'm going with my question, in terms of handling both the ingress and egress in and out on Kimberly. Yes, is that, that's what I'm seeing now?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so everything will have to flow in and out of, on and off that one street. So I think there was a brief comment maybe by Mr. Romasanta about valet parking if necessary. Did I hear that correctly at our site visit?
Yes, I mean, there is, there is a valet service essentially currently at Harborview, and I think that, and Mark, if you want to add anything to this, but the expectation is that guests may likely still check in at the main Harborview Hotel and be sent over here. So it actually, you know, it does work well to keep all of that parking off of Kimberly, because cars will likely be coming from Yanana, I mean, from Chapala and around and up to come into this entranceway. But the hotel complex as a whole, the hotel campus, has to be managed together, and that includes the parking. So it's very likely that those, that valet will be integrated into this parking lot as well.
Okay.
And just on the, on the parking, I just want to clarify that we had put that one-way out to allow for the circulation. If somebody had a, had ran into not being able to, to get a parking space, they would be able to get out.
Yes.
What we did is we added this turn lane, basically, inside the parking. So in the event the parking is full and somebody's coming in, they will be able to turn around, do a three-point turn and leave through that same, the same way that they came in, which is what facilitated getting rid of the, the exit out onto Mason Street.
So can you tell me a little bit how this is going to be monitored? Because I'm sensitive to any backup onto Kimberly, either queuing or otherwise permanent in overnight parking.
Well, I mean, there, you know, obviously, it will be staffed full-time, and there will be staff in the lobby here, so I think the, you know, there's, there's no way that it's going to be in the interest of the hotel to allow people to be parking here that don't belong. And, you know, you know, I believe that's how we, how it gets managed. It's obviously in the interest of the Romasanta family to keep this, you know, operating. And, you know, in that regard, in terms of, in terms of your question, Chair Jordan, you know, I think that no one has been more concerned about the mess down there, really, than, than the Romasantas, and so it's going to be very important that this be done as swiftly as possible and doesn't impact their hotel. And I think the intent right now is to be able to immediately commence construction as soon as the, as soon as the Mason Street Bridge will allow it to occur.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Chair Jordan. On the staff report on page 10, the end of this second paragraph, it says, "This underutilized site would, well, construction of a hotel on this underutilized site would enhance and restore rhythm to the area." I know this is not an easy thing to define, and I'm, but I'm having trouble myself, and I wondered if perhaps staff could expand on what is meant by rhythm there and how the hotel would enhance it.
Commissioner Lodge, I'm just looking real quickly for the waterfront area aesthetic criteria, which contains the actual definition that we used in order to make that finding. And it'll just take me one minute to find that. So in the description of rhythm, it talks about how the waterfront has evolved slowly over the years and that there's daily patterns in the area. There's weekday, weekend patterns. There's the pattern of the sun, which rises and sets. There's the ebb and flow of people biking, skating, and coming for dinner in the area. It says, "Rhythm is an extremely subtle resource quality, yet it gives strength to all the other qualities which characterize the waterfront." Rhythm includes diversity, and they explain that diversity is all the various differences in the waterfront, so the various things you can do, driving, walking, hiking, strolling through the art show. And there's also a variety of ways that these things can be done, talking about the facilities that support those activities. And then it also talks about social complexity, that the waterfront is not just a turameca, but people also live and work there, and the harbor is a working harbor, and you've got, you know, both a residential and commercial purpose to the area. So that's the first aspect of rhythm, diversity. The second aspect is use patterns, and again, that kind of reiterates the different uses that are down in the area, the tourists, the residents, people coming for the art show, that sort of thing. And then finally, it talks about design details. Rhythm occurs spontaneously and is a normal outcome of diversity. Small details, however, modulate rhythms or suppress them altogether. Conversely, design can create rhythm by providing settings for new activities. So as they say, it is a subtle resource quality, but the waterfront area aesthetic criteria and guidelines have tried to define what that is.
And Commissioner Lodge, that, that is attached as Exhibit G of the staff report, and what Allison was referring to is page five of Exhibit G.
Thank you. It is subtle, as you said.
Mr. Campanella.
Thank you, Chair Jordan. On the transfer to EDR, question for staff, the Yanana project has already been sending square footages to other projects, so I presume that there's already covenant in place, has been recorded for that property, because they're already underway. So what would be outstanding would be a grant deed to the receiving site that is executed by whichever party still has the rights to the square footage. Comment being, it should be a pretty simple process, I would think, for the applicant to transfer it over, and I'm bringing this up in light of the fact that going forward, there are going to be, you know, other transfers that are allowed. So I think maybe at some point, the procedure, even though it's in the ordinance, but maybe how to write up these transfers that would be acceptable to community development might just be an action item that we might look at going forward, how maybe better to communicate to the public how they can draft these so they would be readily acceptable by the city. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment, Mr. Cato?
No.
No? Okay, so we'll open and close that section, and then it is back to the commission for comments and deliberation. Ms. Pujo.
Thank you. I'm starting this off. I have some comments in basically two areas. One are some improvements, let's say, I, I thought we could make to a few of the conditions that you already have attached in draft form, and I'd like to go over those first. And then, second relates to some of the concerns and questions that I was asking to staff and the applicant earlier about the lack of, of retail on the, on the first floor on the State Street facade. So if you would indulge me here, I would start with the, the conditions, and I have them in order of the conditions as they go, so hopefully it'll be easy for you to follow. The first comment I have is on Condition B8, and that one has to do with visitor, the visitor information program, and it's on page two of 18 in the conditions. And this relates partly to something that Commissioner Schwartz, I believe, was also bringing up, but it was mentioned today by the applicant and also at the site visit that there is bell service that's provided for travelers coming in from the train station. And given the close proximity to the train station and the importance of encouraging travel to this area without the use of a car at all times, I would suggest the addition of another subsection under that condition that would reflect the availability and announcement of that bell service to potential visitors to the hotel. And I did come up with some draft language, or any language that, you know, anyone else would want to give it a try, I'd be willing to just give you what I thought, but this would be just maybe a starting point, and then you can go from there. But I thought if we just... But I thought if we just simply added an Item F, because there's E items now, that bell service to and from the train station shall be offered, and information on this service included in the above items. The above items talk about their webpage and, and whatnot. So that's my first one. And I guess I should just go through all of these, perhaps, okay. The second one is Condition C4 on page 318, down at the bottom of the page. And this is under Design Review. And this is just a slight wording change. This is the condition regarding nighttime lighting in order to protect the creek. And thank you for showing that 50-foot setback earlier. That was helpful. But I feel that this could be clearer, more clearly stated. And so I would suggest wording that rather than say, "Lighting installed in the hotel shall be sensitive to the creek," because that's highly interpretive, I would prefer wording that said, "Lighting installed on the hotel shall not be directed toward or shed light on the creek." Or actually, it says, "Creek habitat." To me, that is much more clear and, and directive, and better protection for the creek. And then my next comment is under the Design Review section, page four of 18. And this relates to some of my observations and thinking through the different types of extraneous equipment that accompanies a design proposal. You have the rooftop equipment, the electric boxes. And it looks like the applicant has done a very good job of screening those and taking care for those now. But over the life of the project, as Commissioner Jordan was mentioning earlier, things can change. So in order to protect, I think, the screening of those types of things, and also perhaps any noise generation that may accompany those, I would prefer an additional condition that would address that, primarily for the future, because I believe the current design is fine. I do have some, to Gustavat wording on that, too, and could say something like, "All exterior above-ground equipment shall be screened from view and shall not be audible above baseline ambient noise levels at or beyond the property line." And what I mean by that latter part is in the negative declaration, it talks about the current noise levels on the exterior being about 60 decibels right now. So I don't believe that there would be any need for equipment that would exceed that, particularly off the property lines. And then I have one last comment, and that is on Condition E4. Actually, it's more of a question than a comment. It may be cleared up with the staff response. Towards the end, it's under the Construction section, page 11 of 18, at the top of the page. My question is this, and see if it requires any amendment to the language or not. The removal, the condition reads, it's for bird nesting. And the condition reads, "Removal of vegetation shall be avoided during the bird nesting season." It gives the dates where feasible. If avoidance isn't feasible, biologists shall, shall conduct a nesting bird survey, et cetera, et cetera. First of all, this condition is tied to removal of vegetation. But construction itself can impact bird nesting in the area, regardless of whether it's actual vegetation removal or not. So I don't know how staff intends to address that. If it should be addressed, because I noticed on the site visit, there were birds, maybe not nesting, but at least they were sitting in the sycamore trees over by the creek. There may be other trees in the area. So I would just like a thought from staff or perhaps other commissioners about whether there is any need to actually identify what is the area we actually would want to do a bird survey in, and is it only vegetation? So those are my condition comments. And then I do have another comment about the, about the absence of retail use. So I would like to handle this.
The first three seem pretty clear. Did you want to respond to the, the off-site bird nesting comment?
Commissioner Pujo, the way that staff has addressed this, this is a standard condition that we apply to properties that are in a more urban environment. And so it does require avoidance or a survey for all vegetation that is removed, you know, specifically removed. It does not address what you're talking about, other impacts to surrounding trees and vegetation resulting from noise or other construction impacts. However, we do have a condition that, I believe it references the Federal Migratory Bird Act, which does address general impacts to nesting birds. It doesn't specifically include the language or anything, but that is a federal requirement that everyone is subject to, and so we haven't added additional conditions to address it.
So it is my interpretation, then, that you think for this project, that issue or any potential impact or effect on surrounding areas is, is adequately addressed?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll let you continue on with your comments.
Thank you.
You bet.
Now, as to the retail use. In general, the scale and the massing of the project is in good relation to the street. The landscaping appears adequate to me. And the hotel use is clearly consistent with, with the zone. This project will benefit and enjoys great proximity to the well-developed transit and alternatives for transportation in the area, the pedestrian facilities and the, and the I believe the building is in character, generally speaking, with the area. And that brings us partway to justifying the modifications for the setbacks, in my view. I don't believe we're 100% there in that it falls short of some of the consistency with some of our goals for the area. And some of them were mentioned. One of them, and an important one, I believe, is the rhythm portion of the waterfront guidelines and the urban design guidelines. Both of those documents place great emphasis on street vitality, on, as you, as staff mentioned earlier, the social complexities and the need for activity nodes for pedestrians and passerbys. And by pedestrians and passerbys, we're talking about the entire area and the neighborhood and city resources as a whole, not narrowly the users of the annex portion of the, of the hotel as it's proposed. Because there are long stretches without any retail interest for walkers and tourists and people that live in the neighborhood in that area, it's important that for a new structure, because remember, this is a brand-new building, and it will take on a life of its own with its uses over time. It's not a remodel of an older building. It is important to allow for some retail use. It could be a coffee shop, a wine bar, a ticket sales office. It could be a variety of things, and it doesn't need to be large. One of the things that in this area, the waterfront guidelines and the urban design guidelines also speak to is a variety of experiences, small and large, low-end economical eating places, for example, and high-end eating places. So something small, I think, would fit in very well with the uses. And I don't think it's appropriate to rely on the fact that someone can cross State Street with their suitcase, perhaps, to look for a soda or a protein drink or a cup of coffee. So I would like to, and would be interested to know what the rest of the Commission may think about the possibility of including in there some small retail space facing State Street. That being said, I would also just like to throw out there that the parking study that was done, I think, is what the city's plans seek in this area for site-specific review of parking. And I do believe that the parking is, study is adequate. The proposal has 33 spaces. The parking study has a peak demand of 31 spaces. I think there's a little bit of room there if we needed to actually move a little bit on the actual design of the 33 spaces right now, if that would help accommodate a small space. So that's where I am at the moment on, on that topic. I think it would be a very much a lost opportunity if we allowed this to go forward with no, with no retail or pedestrian node activity at all built into it.
That's it? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Commissioner Pujo to go over her comments regarding noise. Again, maybe it's only me, but I didn't quite follow. You talking about during construction or post-construction noise? I didn't really follow your point there.
Thank you. Yes, no, it's, um, this had to do with any equipment that may be installed in the exterior of the building. And...
Post-construction, then?
Post-construction, not during construction.
Okay. Other comments? Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, to start, my initial thought is, even though that we're going to lose some of those mountain views with the construction of anything of any reasonable height here, I'll make the same comment I did on the Turk Heslin project, which Mr. Cornell is associated with, and that is, it was inevitable that at some point, something would be developed on this property. So I'm, I think, you know, I encourage us all to be reasonable. I know there's been some consternation, some discomfort with a structure of this ultimate height going in on this property, but I think that it's reasonable, and it is within our policy and allowances. So I'll, I'll start there. I appreciate the, the shift that I think has taken place in the design since we last heard from you last year. So I'm, I'm pleased with the evolution of the project from its original mass bulk and scale. And also, I think the landscaping plan will be an enhancement to this particular corner on State Street. My macro concern is that this not become Hotel Row, you know? And we need more lodging down in this area, so I'm in support of that. So I'm particularly sensitive to what the street frontage experience is. As Commissioner Pujo mentioned, and we discussed it last year in the conceptual review, the pedestrian experience, not just for your guests, Mr. Roma Santa, but everybody else that's walking by and using, and the bus stop being right there, I think actually it will attract more pedestrian use, and hopefully will attract more pedestrian use. So that notion of street vitality, and as Commissioner Pujo referenced, the activity nodes that's called out in our plan, I think can be stimulated by your project if we have the right visual and architectural and otherwise engaging aspects of the project this close to state and in conjunction with the, the bus stop there. I would be interested at some point today, Mr. Cornell, if, if it's not putting you and Mr. Roma Santa on the spot too much to respond to Commissioner Pujo's thought about some kind of retail. I know there's, a couple of comments have come forth, but in the moment, I don't know if you have any other thoughts about that. I like that it stepped back. Mr. Cornell, in a way, this reminds me of the step-back look of your Turk Heslin project, which I thought was, was just perfect for what overall we're trying to accomplish, which is, within our policies, you're allowed to design and construct projects, whether they're mixed-use, or in this case, a hotel, up to a certain height. But we're not creating that canyonization experience, so to speak, and look. So I'm very much in support of the, the stepped-back look and feel of the project. I think with one ingress-egress location now on Kimberly, we're going to have to monitor it pretty closely. So just put that on your radar, Mr. Roma Sante, to have, have your employees looking into that, so we don't have a queuing. We have other businesses in our community that are causing queues out onto the street. Won't identify them here today, but I think they are both a vehicular and pedestrian source of problem, of potential safety hazards, let alone just overall congestion, which contributes to other issues like air quality and so forth. I think in closing, I'd like to say that, that my first take is I'm in support of Commissioner Pujo's first three of four suggested changes to our approval conditions. I'd like to hear from others. And with that, I'm in, in general, in support of the project moving forward. Thank you.
Would you like me to address it more shortly at this time?
I'm sorry?
We'll wait till after all the comments.
Yeah.
We can just queue that up. Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, well, just going down the list of modifications and the various findings that we are, things that are being requested, discretionary applications. I have trouble with the first one, which is the required 20-foot front setback along State Street. As I think I said at the concept review, clearly, it's a lot with, since it's, it has street frontage on three sides, modifications certainly are a possibility. But I, I really have difficulty with that one, given that it's, especially since it's two stories at the 10-foot setback. Perhaps if it had been stepped back, that would have been an easier one for me to swallow. The, I appreciate that the third floor is set back 43 and 48, mostly 48 feet. I could, I can support the modification on Mason and the one on Kimberly. I don't have a problem with the parking modification. It seems from the, from the record and the experience that the Roma Santas have had that, in addition to the parking study, that now some of their customers do come by train. And so there won't be need for, the need for all 34 that are required in the ordinance. Transfer of existing development rights, this is a good example of a transfer of existing development rights. The one where, I believe, from the same location, development rights were transferred to the Ellen Canto in the middle of a residential area, I thought was completely inappropriate. Unfortunately, the way it's, the new ordinance is, it's, it's been, that's being developed, that will not be possible to happen in the future. But this is, the idea to, to move development rights from one area in, in the downtown to another, to lessen the density on that and increase it on the other, this seems to be an appropriate transfer. The development plan is okay. And then, of course, the, it certainly seems, it obviously is a appropriate use for this area. Santa Barbara is in part a tourist town, and I can understand the concern about it becoming an, an all- becoming an all-hotel area, but remember, Cabrillo is all hotel between state, almost all hotel between state, and no commercial. Santa Barbara, in my opinion, has more than enough properties zoned for commercial uses. People, and there are numbers of vacancies along State Street and other commercial zones, more and more people shop online, and there is less and less demand for, you know, on the ground retail. Mr. Romasantas are -- and well, and I think we need to take into account the realities of running a small retail business. It's not easy. And Mr. Romasanta already said that, or indicated, that the coffee shop that was required, or coffee bar that was required, isn't making it. I think that it's, to my view, it's okay for pedestrians. I know now walk all the way from the beach up to the main retail section, Mercedo Nuevo is, and there are plenty of stores along one after another, the other side of the freeway. And as far as, it seems to me that this is a different area. It's not the commercial area, and I think people will be happy to look at landscaping rather than more stores as they walk along there. So those are my comments on the project.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. Well, I think this is a good project for the city and for the neighborhood, definitely an excellent design on Mr. Cornell's part. I appreciate that you all took all of our comments. I think you took all of our comments to heart from our -- from the concept review and have made the changes that we suggested at that time. As far as the suggestion to incorporate retail, I tend to agree with Commissioner Lodge. We're not talking about a mixed-use residential-commercial project. We're talking about a hotel, and that's a little different animal, I think, than a mixed-use commercial-residential condominium project. If the applicant in the hotel business, he probably doesn't want to get into the retail landlord business particularly. So I would allow the project to move forward the way it's been proposed. I think it's a good project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campanella?
Thank you, Chair Jordan. A couple of comments. We spoke at the concept review that, you know, if the -- that the building, massing and size of the building could be bigger and still fit within the zoning, and that Mr. Cornell and the applicant, the owner, made strides to try to break that up at various levels. And my understanding, if I look at the current submission, that was even set back a little bit more versus the maximum they could build. And I believe they have a zero setback line to the parking lot by the burger. So they've set that back as well, so I'm pretty happy with the look. The other thing is, I think to consider on setbacks is the -- what utilization is being obtained out of the property. And one is the replacement of the laundry. I mean, if that wasn't an issue, if they didn't have to replace the laundry, perhaps there could be some more setbacks. But that's one of the items that service all of their -- the hotel, so that's incorporated into the building and probably the only spot that really makes sense, which is on that corner to give access in and out without having to go through the hotel itself. Parking, that's another constraint on setbacks. I mean, to get utilization out of a property like this, you want to make sure that you can have, let's call it double-loaded parking within the garage. You don't want to push back and only be able to have one row of parking because that would be a real detriment to the amount of rooms you can get. And I think it's balancing all of those factors. Setback from Beback Burger, the laundry, and parking is all well-taken. On the issue of parking and the traffic study, I don't know if it's incorporated in the traffic study, but I would think that the volume of in-and-out people coming to the hotel is not really during peak hours. It would be on a weekend. It would be check-in by 3:00, check-out by noon. So I don't think that's plugged in. I don't know if that's plugged in or accounted for within the traffic analysis, other than saying it's commercial property. I don't know if that's accounted for. The traffic report did show weekend traffic, but I don't know if it used the same calculation for purposes of evaluation and trips, just like they would any other commercial property. But this definitely would have less impact. The other benefit on parking is to have 33 families, because these are pretty good-sized units, drive to Santa Barbara and keep their car parked for an entire weekend, I think is a benefit. There's not much 24-hour parking around for tourists. This means they're not -- people are not going around looking for parking places. They're not driving to a winery and then driving to another winery. I mean, they're enjoying the city with the car parked, which would cut down on total trips, let's say, if somebody were coming into the city to visit. As far as the building itself, I think it's well-designed with articulation, and I think we have to remember too that it's a hotel for visitors. And you're a block and a half from the beach. You're not on the beach, you're not looking at the beach. But if you can, I think, design it so that you have a flavor of a resort aspect to it and a beach aspect, which I think they've done. And that means balconies and setbacks, be able to step out and have some views. You don't have a view of the ocean, but you might have the hills, the activity on the state. And I think they've done a real good job of plugging that in and really complying, both the building and I think the concept, complies with the zoning ordinance where tourism and travel-related uses shall be encouraged in a manner which does not detract from the desirability of the shoreline as a place to visit. And certainly, they're not detracting from the shoreline. And I think if anything, they're adding to the experience, the way the building is designed. So I appreciate the work that's been done over several generations of design, and I'm going to support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will essentially echo what you heard from Mr. Campanella and Mr. Thompson. I think this is also a project that benefited from the concept review and has moved forward and thankfully incorporated pretty much everything that was talked about. It's obviously a change at the start of the year with the commission members, and you get a little new perspective after that concept review on one item or two items. So that's just luck of the draw. But some of the key areas there were, I think we talked about the loss of the driveway on Mason Street, stopping another curb cutout. You've got great articulation on all three sides. It's appropriate with the surrounding development. I realize, you know, the setback issue becomes a monster unto itself as you start to grant one and then another, and pretty soon by the third one, now you're appropriate with the surrounding development anytime you want a setback modification. But this will plug the last open space on that side of the street under the freeway. So I think we've made it consistent with what we see around it. I also really want to give you kudos for incorporating the creek project and the Kimberly realignment. I think you've gone out of your way to do that. The setback from the creek and the steps you'll take, although not mentioned here today, to do the plantings further down creek also, will be a tremendous benefit to the community. On the issues, the, again, the setbacks are consistent with the area development. The views have been shown in the report to be less insignificant. The transfer of development rights meets the city's processes and intent. And the parking modification was actually at our behest, so it's obvious they're at our benefit too. As regards the retail, I may have inadvertently opened that door at the concept review. I think I rattled on with plenty of examples of what you could do on the ground for there for either a host center for the DO or artwork or something like that too. So perhaps it doesn't need to be retail over there somewhere. Perhaps to accomplish that little spark or rhythm of an increased pedestrian presence over there, it can just be some public art or some murals on a wall. I think there's a huge burden you face there with that bus stop sitting right in the middle of your property. And perhaps there's some other design, art type of considerations that could be incorporated into the side of the building that would help move you towards where Commissioner Peugeot And then, I will just say this because, as Mr. Cornell pointed out, me lecturing a member of the Romasanta family over taking care of Lower State Street is kind of foolhardy, but my conversation was more of a global type of conversation. And I also, when I was looking at the days of construction, I also did my usual, hey, what about that? And so I will just toss out that there's a host of Monday holidays where, I'm sure you know that becomes a Friday holiday too. And if we could avoid construction on those days, we could avoid construction on Fiesta Friday. We could avoid construction on the Friday following July 4th, those type of days, which I think I'm kind of obnoxiously lecturing the wrong person again, because I know you guys know exactly what you're doing down there and you're great contributors to that part of State Street. So in all, I'm supportive as the project it is. One thing I'd like to hear back from staff is on the three suggestions for those condition rewrites and whether you want to get down and whether what your recommendation is to rewrite those conditions that are just usually boilerplate, or if you'd rather, your suggestion would be not to get down in the weeds on those.
Mr. Chair, sorry. I'll get used to that.
Thank you.
At least you didn't yell. At least you didn't say madam mayor. I didn't say madam mayor.
Or Mr. Mayor. Or Mr. Mayor. That'd be beautiful.
Mr. Mayor, I give you a promotion. I'll let staff comment on the condition regarding the bell service, the lighting and so forth. Personally, I don't have any problem. We can figure out language that gets to that meaning, and I think both of those suggestions work. What I'd like to comment on is the condition regarding future improvements and noise of those improvements. The city has a noise ordinance that deals with additional noise on fixed structures. So we already have a standard that applies to whatever kind of mechanical devices might get added to this building in the future. And I'd recommend that we stick with that standard. If we find that that standard isn't sufficient, then let's change that standard as opposed to going through a patchwork of individual conditions on individual projects. For the same purpose, this project's in El Pueblo Viejo. It's subject to HLC review. Any exterior modification to this project has to go to HLC, and the aesthetics would be evaluated at that time.
You want to stay up here or go over there? Mr. DeBusk, do you want to talk yet about those, or you want me to stay up here?
I can stay up there. That's -- thank you.
Okay. Ms. Peugeot?
Thank you. I have just a quick follow-up question. Does that mean that any additional equipment installed on the project, if it was just a piece of equipment, that would also have to go to the HLC?
If it's visible in the exterior of the building, it would be an exterior alteration, and it would require approval by the HLC.
I see. Okay. Then for my part, that would satisfy my concerns for that condition?
So if I have that right, then the remaining two notes I took had to do with the bell service to the train station and back on reflecting availability and actually trumpeting that a little more. And the shall be sensitive replaced with something that was a little stronger, such as not be directed in or reflected on the creek. And staff okay with playing with the wording for those when they came back? Any further comments or action by the commission then? Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the mitigated negative deck and approve the project with the findings and conditions with those two modifications as outlined in the staff report.
Good. Do you want to? Okay. And that would -- that be subject to those? Did you just -- I was talking to two people at the same time. Subject to the two conditions that Ms. Peugeot talked about, right? Thank you.
Yeah, I said that.
Okay. And, okay, well, let's see if we get a second or discussion on that first, so.
I'll check that motion.
Thank you. Do you want to hear the motion again?
No, I just don't know if we allowed Mr. Cornell the opportunity to respond or to comment further on the notion of having anything else, whether it was along the lines of Commissioner Peugeot's idea or yours, Mr. Chair, for some change to the front that would draw in pedestrians, a little more engagement, liveliness. So it looks like Mr. Romasanta might want to comment.
Right now, that wasn't part of the motion.
It was not part of the motion.
Correct.
But I think that I was offering the opportunity for Mr. Cornell, Mr. Romasanta today to comment on that. So if it were appropriate to include in a motion or not, we would be clear about that if you had a thought today.
Okay. So let's do -- so let's go that direction. Mr. Romasanta?
Thanks for your time. We're happy to look at it some type of art or public visual impact on the portion to the right as you're looking at the building from the bus station. I think that'd be a great idea, whether it's some type of, you know, physical thing on the building or in front of the building. I think HLC would do a great job making sure it was appropriate. I just want to comment on the retail real quickly. There is a lot of retail down there. If you look across the street and as well as our coffee bar, you can get a soda, you can get a T-shirt, you can get coffee, you can get ice cream, you can get souvenirs, you can get sporting goods, surfing goods. There is a lot more down there than people realize at times. That Reggie does have a ticket booth down there, that he sells tickets to every single thing. Reggie, who is a good friend and a good neighbor, would be very disappointed if I opened a competitive ticket booth type of thing. So we're happy to do something artwork-wise.
So would you have a suggestion back to the motion maker to add or revise that motion?
I would ask the maker of the motion if he would be receptive to incorporating some reference to enhanced art that would stimulate public engagement.
Well, I would go along with asking the applicant to investigate it. I wouldn't go along with us mandating that they do it, particularly it comes into the purview of the HLC. So, yeah, I would include in the wording that we encourage the applicant to investigate the inclusion of public art or amenities on the exterior of the building.
The exterior or in the space between?
Yeah, in the facade or the setback of the building. But I wouldn't go so far as to mandate it.
Further discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Ms. Peugeot?
Thank you. A little slow on my button there. I retain a concern that that is basically a facade ornament if it was applied in that way and not being mandatory. And in addition, doesn't provide that flexibility of space that I was looking for. I would not be interested in mandating the type of use that goes in, only that the space be available. And if the space were available and it were used as a reprieve from the street for a pedestrian to go in and view some art, that would be the owner or the operator's choice. But the structure itself, from my perspective, needs to include the flexibility to retain that option for a usable space, albeit small, very small if you like, for that section of the street. I do not see that a coffee shop at Cabrillo or across the street is at all adequate. There should be multiple opportunities along the length of the street. That's my view. Thank you.
Just so I'm clear, is the reference to exterior artwork or murals is not what you're talking about. You're actually talking about square footage inside the footprint?
Yes, with a step-in refuge ability for a pedestrian.
Mr. Chair, before we move forward, my interest is in seeing a strong aligned support from this commission in moving forward with this project, whatever that, however that's expressed or articulated. So let me just ask for clarification and for my own education. Is there any type of artwork on the property that would not trigger HLC review? Ms. DeBusk, to your knowledge?
Commissioner Schwartz, unless it's entirely within the existing building and not visible from the exterior.
Okay. I'm trying to be sensitive to or mindful of streamlining the process for you, Mr. Cornell, and your clients. Cornell, and your client, so I would not want to burden you with having to go back to HLC, which I guess is what would be required here. I'm not interested in furthering that for you, or, as I said, burdening you with that. But I am interested in some type of artistic expression in some way that would, you know, catch the public's eye, interest them, and perhaps, you know, kind of meandering more than heading right down to Cabrillo. And however, I don't want to, I don't want to hold up this project, so I don't know if we can come to something that would appeal to the motion maker and be acceptable to you, but I'd like to kind of get there if we can today.
So, just so I'm clear, too, on the discussion, are you acceptable with the revision that you offered to the motion maker?
Not quite. A hybrid of it, because I would like to see the applicant commit, not just investigate. We've gone down the, I'll look into it if it's feasible, et cetera, path with other applicants and other projects, which wasn't satisfactory to me in the end. So, some kind of commitment here as a part of the condition, without designing it today, but just some kind of commitment that there'll be something more. And I don't need it to be retail, so I'm supporting the chair's suggestion about, I think you said, some artistic reference, art of interest to the public.
You're going to make this my fault, huh?
No, I'm agreeing with you that that would satisfy, I think that would satisfy the, some of our interests in what we're trying to accomplish with pedestrian activity and enlivening this area of Lower State Street. Thank you.
Mr. Cornell.
Chair Gordon, Commissioner Schwartz, commissioners, you know, this is, it's interesting here, because this does relate a little bit to Commissioner Lodge's, Mayor Lodge's concern about the setback. And it's funny that, you know, I've always, I have to say parenthetically here, my opinion has always been that this 20-foot setback is completely incongruous along State Street in the HRC 2 zone. It's been a problem that you all have been grappling with for a very long time. It makes no sense on this corridor. If we impose a 20-foot setback, then retail is particularly not going to work, and it makes no sense at all. So, I am struck by, what's interesting about this project is, I completely agree with Mark, that there is a lot of retail down here relative to the need. We don't want to detract from Paseo Nuevo and the real core retail of downtown. We want people going from these hotel rooms up into State Street to shop. We don't want them to necessarily stay down here exclusively, and yet, we still have this setback issue. And I think that this project offers a really nice little respite of relief of landscape right at the bus stop, and that there isn't a need for retail. So, speaking to this, I, it's very important that it not feel like a dead blank wall there. And so, what we have envisioned thus far is that we do have beautiful, special ornamental iron grill work that is unique on the ground floor that will help ventilate the parking structure. And so, I think there's an opportunity there to incorporate a beautiful, unique pattern that is something more than just a standard metal grill. And I think Mark would be, you know, willing to, you know, if we can consider that as part of this, the public art element that Landmarks, HLC would review, and possibly the incorporation of something else, whether, in that landscape area, whether it's a little sculpture, or a fountain, or something that would add noise, you know, I think we're willing to do that and have HLC be the ones that would review it. So, if you want to toy with language, it's maybe a little bit more than encourage, I think we're willing to go along with that.
Mr. Thompson.
I was going to point out that this project has been reviewed by HLC. I believe I saw a final review continuing through the planning commission, so I don't think we want to make any big changes. It's going to require the applicant to do some redesign, to have to go back to the HLC once more. If it's a minor change to incorporate something in the landscape setback, I don't think that would be too onerous. But beyond that, I think we're putting a little bit too much requirement on the applicant to have to go back and go through the HLC process again.
Ms. Lodge.
Chair Gordon.
I just want to clarify, Chair Gordon, we have to go back to them anyway for preliminary approval. We've been to them three times, and they like the project, but they ultimately will have to give a design approval, and then we will have to get final approval where they review all the details, like that iron work. So, we have to go to them anyway.
Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Chair Gordon. I'd just expand a little bit on the fountain idea. You could have a fountain and perhaps a little path that goes around it and back, you know, from the sidewalk and then back to the sidewalk. That would perhaps enliven things for pedestrians. That's just a suggestion I'm throwing out.
Ms. Peugeot. Sorry, I was counting spots.
Thank you. In order to gain my support for the project, I will need to see that there is some addition to the street vitality, not only for guests. I would prefer a usable indoor flexible space. I could agree or live with something that was a public respite of some sort as you walk by. Commissioner Lodge's comment is interesting. I would follow that up with a question. Would that be available to the general public, or would that be considered off-limits except for hotel guests? Because that kind of use pattern, allowing someone to actually come and pause, or maybe they're waiting for something in that area and waiting to meet a friend or some such thing, is that waiting for their friend that went across the street to get the cup of coffee would be an important element. It would need to be inviting to the passerby, and that's what I'm looking for.
Mr. Cornell.
Commissioner Peugeot, just to clarify, we do, you know, we have, we've agreed to having that area open anyway without a wall, and we have a path right now from the sidewalk to our bicycle, our covered bicycle parking. So, there's an opportunity there to incorporate, I think Commissioner Lodge's comment about the fountain is a nice one, and I think it might be a really nice addition and a noise element with the bus stop. Obviously, if there's a, if there's person loitering there and is a problem, the Roma Santes are going to want to, you know, reserve the right to be able to kick somebody off their property, but it would be, there's nothing that would prevent somebody from using it, as long as they're using it respectfully.
As happens at Paseo Nuevo. Yeah, it's private property. And I would also just point out, too, you know, one day it's on, one day it's off, but right across the street, you're dealing with a world-class public plaza that's specifically designed to attract thousands of people over to it if the La Entrauda ever gets built. But that is, that's a huge plaza that was negotiated directly across the street. So, Mr. Campanella.
Thank you, Chair Gordon. A question currently on the corner, is there some decorative paving that's on there currently? That's, would be in the public right away.
Chair Campanella, we originally had a little labyrinth kind of a design in that, but it wasn't, we basically had to defer to the design of the State Street improvements that was being done as part of the Entrauda project, so we don't have it now. We, the same pavement is going to all be incorporated so that that feels like a little plaza in the corner, but there's no special treatment there.
But there's a distinction between a circle of some type in the flatwork that's there, as envisioned?
There isn't now. There was in the concept review, but we, again, we took it out because of what had already been designed and approved by Landmarks in that, in those street improvements.
Right. But the area itself would, as far as, and I understand the issues, and I commented on it, I think, when we had our concept review, of people gathering, if you go, you know, where do we meet, on which corner? But you do have a pretty large area there, respective to other corners where people can meet up, I guess.
Absolutely, yeah. It's a very, it's a very large corner.
And the meetup is not necessarily people with, that are walking, it could be people biking, you know, where they just set up there. So, I could see it as a gathering spot without having to create something that may in fact limit the ability to gather by putting hardscape of some type in there on the corner and allow it to be more flexible for people to hook up.
I mean, I think, if I may, I think that the thought of the fountain, at least that I was thinking of, was in that northeast corner in the landscaping where I have that little pathway to the bike.
No, I understand that. I was just talking about the idea to gather, or to meet someone, or I'll meet you at 5:00, and they're in the hotel and they're meeting guests or something like that. I think there's an area sufficient outside on that corner to satisfy that without having to get into hardscape, that's all. Thanks.
Brian, do you have, do you have an overhead available where you could actually point out what you were thinking, and maybe that would help spur along some discussion
Well, that was premature. Actually, yeah, that's good. So, it's warming up. The, I'm going to go forward, actually, to this elevation first. In fact, I'll go to the, so you can see, these are, without the landscaping, these are where we were imagining these, you know, what I really want to be beautiful decorative grills that are something more than, or something that are extraordinary. That's our landscaping, and one of the grills is, this is the gate also to the bicycle parking. Going back to that plan, then, one too many. So, there is a little walkway to the back of sidewalk right here. The commemorative plaque goes from about, is right at this point, and then the wall extends, you know, that distance. So, it seems like that's the area as it begins to wa, you know, as the sidewalk begins to turn, where we could do a little fountain element or whatever that would be nice.
Thoughts from the commission? Ms. Peugeot.
Thank you. I would offer that it's, it's helpful, and in order to move the project along, I could accept this kind of proposal, but I need to know and need to hear that it would be not an existing pathway to the bike station with a fountain on the side, but an actual area maybe more aligned with the one on, at the bank, or maybe it's a former bank by now, on Upper State Street, where it has the statue, and it has a pathway behind the statue where you can, going to cut around the corner, that actually has a kind of offshoot from the sidewalk where someone could walk up to the fountain, pause at the fountain, look at the fountain, and come back. So, there'd be some interaction with the actual area, rather than just looking at a fountain as you're walking by or as you're getting your bicycle. If we could do that, then, in the spirit of moving the project along, I could support that. In general, this area, and you'll be hearing from me more on this theme in the future, it is important to make sure that we do everything we can to vitalize these streets as projects are being built.
I'm just going to keep you up there, Mr. Cornell.
Commissioner Peugeot, I, you know, I am fine with the concept. I just, I want to caution everyone that it's not that big of an area. You know, this is only 10 by 10, so it's not, it's not going to do all those things that you just described, but certainly in terms of making it feel welcome and have it be more than just a token little fountain in the corner, I want to do that. But I also don't want to lose my opportunity. I mean, this is, this is a eucalyptus here that's an important tree. I don't want to lose, you know, my planting opportunity either, so I think we, I think this is, this is a small, I mean, it's a detail, it's a small little urban touch, it's not a big thing. It's, I just want to make sure we are all in agreement there.
Mr. Campanella.
Just one thought as we're all giving some suggestions here, and without trying to hold you up at HLC, there's a, there's a window to the garage on the way up the stairs on the corner of the building. Just a small window that's on the side of the garage. I don't know if that's needed for ventilation or not, but just maybe for a thought, not required, but just for a thought, maybe that's a spot to put something that memorializes some type of art, because it'd be visible for the corner and also the people walking up the stairs. So, you could have circulation in front of it without it inhibiting any of the setbacks that you're trying to do. It's, I don't know if you can spot it, yeah, on that wall right there, on the State Street side, right? That's just a great window for design? It's not used for air circulation?
It is, it is a ventilation grill. I'd have to check our calculations on it, but, you know, it's possible. We can, we can look at that, but I do, I obviously do have ventil, code ventilation requirements.
Okay. I was just trying to get something that's on the building, but doesn't, it's already have circulation in front of it, so you don't have to create some other circulation around the fountain. But that's my suggestion. Just a thought.
So, Mr. Thompson, I guess I'd come back to you and ask, in addition to your original motion, if you, how you want, how you'd consider phrasing what you just heard, if that would be.
Given that the applicant has agreed to incorporate some kind of fountain and/or public art in the front landscaping setback, I would include that with the motion.
And the proper way to do that would be direction to HLC to work with the applicant to accomplish that?
They're going to have to, in any case.
Yes, as opposed to, opposed to the previous language, which was sort of like investigate and, it's more like direction to, to.
They will incorporate some form of public art and/or fountain in the landscape setback.
Correct. I think, to be fair, would probably include some wording along the lines of to offer a pause or respite to the pedestrian element type of thing, just so they kind of get the intent to what was being set up here, rather than just put something on the wall or something in the ground.
Want to get rhythm in that, too?
We'll make that part, we'll put that in the wording of the condition.
Okay. Mr. Chair, just so that everybody's clear, that this additional element will be a further intrusion in the setback, so just your approval of the front setback modification will need to accommodate this new, future improvement at the, at the design and scale that the HLC finds acceptable.
Any other comments? Okay. Does anybody, does everybody understand the motion? Everybody good? Chair Gordon. Yes, Mr. Cato.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't see it. I didn't hear the second or agree to the, to the new language.
I'm sorry.
Discussion second.
So, we will then be voting on the second, the first and the second, as amended, with inclusion of all the discretionary approvals, agreement with the staff findings, and then two, two changes in wordings to the conditions, one reflecting the bell service, the other reflecting the change in the wording to represent sensitivity to the creek watershed, and then the last set of wording having to do with incorporation of an art/fountain piece to foster respite or improve the pedestrian experience. Is everybody happy with that?
To improve the rhythm.
Thank you. The rhythm would be better. Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Great. So, congratulations, you have a project. This project is appealable in the next 10 days, and I look forward to, as I'm sure we all do, seeing this project go forward, so. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Mr. Cato.
Before you start with the administrative agenda, I would like to make a couple of introductions, if I may.
You may.
Thank you. So, I'd like to introduce our, our new administrative supervisor, Mia Martinez. She'll stand or wave or something. And, and one of our new recording secretaries, Rosa Riley Rogers.
Hello.
This is, this is what we put you through for your first visit, huh? We'll start with the staff hearing officer, if there's anything. Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Chair Gordon. There were two items. One was for a gate to be over the permitted height, solid gate to provide privacy on similar length of lane, and that was turned down because the staff hearing officer, there was a, there was a possible alternative solution that would not require that, you know, the kind of modification that was requested. The other was a house that was completely, it was a little hard to know because it kind of got built in bits and pieces, but it's from 1949, it's on Olive Street in the 1200 block, and it's practically right on the street, it's four feet back, no parking, and some as-built, well, and it was before the show for some as-built additions, changes, and so on. And some were approved and some were not, and there was considerable discussion about just how to handle this tricky piece of property, but that was, there, there isn't anything on that that was, needs to come forward to the planning commission. Although there was considerable discussion with this last, with both of those about the possibility of appeals by the applicants to the planning commission. Historic Landmarks Commission, the main project before them was La Entrada, and there was all this discussion where Commissioner Addison was there as well. The new owner is proposing, was proposing to put more retail right on the street and close off this nice big plaza that we finally got there. And the HLC made it very plain that they were not interested. So, there were some other changes proposed to the California Hotel part and Parts A and Parts B across from, that were considered improvements, and, and they were, they were happy with those proposed changes, but not what was proposed on Part C directly across from what we just approved.
Super. Ms. Peugeot?
Thank you, yes. On January 24th, I attended the harbor commission. It was very interesting, and it was my first meeting as their liaison. And in that meeting, they provided a facilities management report and a harbor operations report. And in general, I can state that there is very good news about the economic upturn, let's say, of activity at the harbor. And also, they went over their different programs and the status of those programs at the harbor, which are many, and including the Ponga boats, the shark attacks, and all sorts of very interesting responsibilities that, that they have. I'm just in awe of them. And also, they did a vote to approve one small lease, and I believe it's for a research space. And then also, they set up an ad hoc subcommittee to review the parking policy for the main harbor parking lots. We'll probably hear more about that in upcoming weeks and, and months.
Super. Thank you. Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is not a committee report, but folks may find it of interest. From my affiliation with the Coalition for Sustainable Transportation, we were, we were recently notified by Amtrak that they are going to implement a new program late this spring where for the first time bicyclists will be able to reserve a space for their bikes on the Pacific Surfliner. So, this will help enhance and allow us to further reach out to this demographic, this traveler demographic. The coach cars will have the current bike racks replaced with both luggage racks and new, a new bike-only area. So, this is the route between San Diego and San Luis Obispo, and we think it's great news for combining bike and rail travel. It's kind of interesting on the heels of the 101 State Street project that we just heard, where we can encourage folks to maybe leave their cars at home when they come to Santa Barbara and, and that they still can get around and really enjoy our community. So, I wanted to share that with everyone. Thanks.
It's a couple weeks ago, I think, on a Thursday night and Saturday, the Urban Forest Tree Master Plan had a pair of outreach meetings, and I was able to go to the one on Thursday night, and staff had a good turnout of about 35 people, and I'm presuming they had pretty good turnout, turnout on, on Saturday also. So, they're now working on incorporating the outreach comments into the next direction, and that committee will meet again sometime later this month to review and go over that and take the next steps forward. And then, as always, it's First Thursday, so forget not to go out and enjoy downtown art and wine tonight, starting at 5:00 or 5:30, and have a good time. With that, we'll be adjourned.